The planning commission meeting for Monday, October 18th, 2021 to order. So Stephanie, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Sure. Ready?
Ready.
Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So second item on the agenda is a presentation for the draft parks and recreation plan. And who is going to lead us with that?
Yeah, good evening. I will go ahead and give our consultant a brief introduction. The city hired Tom Beckwith, Beckwith Consulting, to prepare the city's parks and recreation plan. We have shared the draft document with the planning commission previously. We are still putting the finishing touches on the document before we have an official public release and comment period. Tom emailed us today and said he was hoping by the, I think, the end of next week or somewhere in that vicinity to have that draft document ready to go out publicly and then we'll have a public comment period before it comes back to the planning commission for sort of a final review and public hearing. I will hand this meeting off to Tom and Tom, did you want to share your screen? And control the presentation?
Sure, I think that'd be easier. Let's give that a shot.
All right, I am, I believe I have given you that permission, so let's see if that worked.
Okay, I think so.
Has the city council already seen this?
No, the city council has not seen this and we are advising the city council to come back and just watch the recording of the planning commission meetings that they can receive the same information. It will eventually go to the city council for review and final approval, but that'll be after the planning commission finishes with it.
Thank you.
All right, Tom, take it away.
Okay, can everybody see that?
Yes.
All right. These are the things we looked at in the planning process. There were six tasks. We updated your demographics and your inventories. We updated your goals. We've updated your plan elements. We developed an implementation program and including a capital facilities program, which I'll preview later on in the, in the process. These are some of the key population growth implications. You can see on the top left, you're expected to grow above 30,000 by the year 2015. But most importantly is the graph on the top right. That's an age projection of what you will look like in 2050. The blue bars are the, the numbers of people concentrated from zero to 85 plus. You can see it's somewhat of a straight line. It's kind of a slight bell curve. That was reflection of the baby boom, but if you look at the red bars, that's what's projected by 2050. If you maintain the same attractions and the same kind of characteristics that you have now. And you can see there are still middle families with children. But increasingly, the ages are going to be 55 and up with a pronounced concentration on 85 plus. That's definitely going to affect everything in your economy, your social services, and particularly in your park and recreation activities. Now, one thing down on the bottom is just kind of give you an overview of Kitsap County's population projections through 2040. On the left are the red bars are deaths as you go upwards in 2040. And on the right are births and in migration and it's in migration that's causing the growth in the county and is causing the growth in Port Orchard. We projected your recreation activity volumes to 2040 using those age-specific concentrations. And on the left, I put kind of arrows to highlight where the major activity volumes are going to be. The biggest volume is observing wildlife, plants, birds, animals, and marine life. And the next following in order are swimming indoors and outdoors, weight conditioning, aerobics and fitness, playgrounds, bike riding on roads and streets, walking on park trails and walking with a pet on leash in a park. So that's a reflection, as you can see, with a little bit less emphasis on the most active recreational activities because of your age spread. But by far, the biggest kind of attractions you can expect are wildlife, which is natural features and open spaces and aerobics and fitness, which is community centers. These are your existing park assets. The top left graphic shows your parks and open spaces. That's what the circles represent. And there you have 16 developed facilities within your city limits and in some cases bordering your UGA. On the top right are every other public park from the ports to the county to Washington State. And you can see most of those are grouped in the established developed city up in the north and then just below McCormick Woods. The bottom left are their HOA parks and you've got a significant amount of them. They're clustered primarily in McCormick Woods, but there are some scattered in and around the newly developed areas of the city. Now, the key issue about HOA parks is they're open to residents of HOAs. They're not public parks and trails as we know them. And in the bottom right are your school districts. And they kind of fill in and around that outskirts of your city limits and within the old established part of town. And of course, they include recreational facilities as well that are open to the public. One of our issues is where are the gaps? And we plot this by looking at five-minute walks. The ability to walk five minutes to get to a neighborhood park that has a picnic table or a playground or where the most immediate kinds of activities. You can see the yellow covers McCormick Woods fairly decently and certainly covers the old developed portions of the city and the areas to the southeast of the city, but there are significant areas that are white. Meaning there aren't park facilities within those zones. So those people have to drive or use up some other means to get to what we might call the most immediate neighborhood park asset. So one of the emphasis of the plan is how do we fill those gaps in a meaningful way? We also have social equity considerations. Then what we're looking at here is the people who are non-English speaking, live below the poverty line, have single parents or paying more than 40% of their income for high housing costs. And you can see where the most bright colored orange and red areas are in kind of the center area bordering SR16 on the southwest and then high housing costs, of course, surround most of the developing areas to the east. So one critical concern here is to making sure those particular areas have access to the kinds of neighborhood facilities and services that are most important to them. Now, we did a survey, outreach survey for all your resident households and asked them some questions about their behavior, their priorities. And these are kind of the summaries of what they told us. There were 188 that completed the survey. One question we asked was which parks do you use the most? So in Port Orchard Parks, you can see it's the waterfront park and your Bay Street pedestrian path. They're the most frequently utilized of all the people that completed the survey. The very bottom are Paul Powers Jr. Park and Sage Park, which are relatively undeveloped and in some cases not as easily accessible. We also asked them how they use the county and state parks. And you can see the South Kitsap Regional Park is the most heavily used other than a city park and but not quite as much as waterfront park. It's still significant. And the least used, of course, is our Barker Creek Corridor, which are basically open spaces. My organization, which organizations do they frequent the most? The library programs and of course Kitsap County Parks and Rec. But that's a fairly representative engagement by almost all those organizations. So you do have organizations within the city and the UGA that are meeting some of the recreation needs. If you did not participate, what was the reason why? And increasingly, it's unaware of the programs. And doesn't mean that you're not promoting them, but at least it's not reaching them to the things that they're most interested in. When we asked about the level of satisfaction, they were highest for park maintenance and for trails and open space maintenance. And those are significant scores. Those are good scores, actually, and almost everything had above average. Now, the weights are on a one to five scale. One is very poor, five is the highest. So anything above a three is above average. So you're above average in everything, even including restaurant, restaurant maintenance. What priority would you give to having the follow types of outdoor facilities increased or added to Port Orchard? Regardless of who provides them. And you can see that the highest scores are playgrounds, picnic facilities, trails, shoreline and beach access and community gardens. The least, at least supported in this was skate parks. And that doesn't mean it's not important, but it's not important when we look at the broad population response and priorities. When we asked about indoor facilities, it was youth activity center, a public library, leisure swimming pool, lap swimming pool, fitness facility, indoor walking and indoor gym. Those were all above averages. But you can almost go down through the complete list and be slightly above averages. The least of the list that we gave them, of course, a juice tea and a coffee bar. Although those have proven to be very successful and some of the newest community centers we've been involved in. What priority would you give to have some organization, that important to say some organization? It doesn't necessarily mean the city to provide the following types of indoor programs. After-school and education were the highest priorities, but they were all above average. If it were possible, what would you get to have some organization provide the following types of volunteer opportunities? And the greatest, almost all of them were above average, but clearly the highest was volunteering and recreation, volunteering in parks, volunteering in trails, and even volunteering in cultural services. So one question is, are we effectively utilizing this particular interest? Here's some of the proposals. This is an example of open space conservancies. The light green are existing, those circles are like are existing composites, that's city, port, county, state, and HOAs. The yellow are the proposals. And you can see that they're, they're basically along the creek corridors. We want to we want to protect the riparian corridor and make some of those open spaces more available. And the specifics are shown down on the bottom of the right-hand corner. This is for waterfront access, the same kind of idea. The yellow circles are expand your access clear to the point of where you meet SR16 and clear to the east where you meet your UGA boundaries. And those access points would be everything from fishing to kayaks to just being able to put your foot in the water or observe wildlife. These are your off-road trail proposals. The hash marks indicate what we're proposing. It's expanding the Bay Street Trail to encompass the complete shoreline waterfront, incorporating what's already developed in McCormick Woods and expanding and connecting that between the waterfront and between those systems that are McCormick Woods. And another key component here is to extend a trail down through Veterans and South Regional Park to connect to the waterfront and connect those two significant park assets together. These are the proposals for the on-road trails and some of this is coming right out of your comprehensive plans, transportation element. And what it does is it fills in and around the brown bars, which are the off-road trails. So this would provide significant access not only to the parks within your system, but also the, the schools and commercial centers. These are some of the particular ideas that are incorporated in the plan. And the top left are skate dots. And the idea of skate dots is to take just one particular equipment or jump or act or element out of a skate court and distribute them throughout the city. So younger age groups have more direct access to them. In most cases, these are put in existing parks as kind of a side, as you can see, this example takes it off a trail. And the same in the top right is another example of the skate dot in Seattle. And they're very successful and they're very well used. In the bottom left are dirt pump tracks, which is kind of an increasing activity. This one comes from Bellingham and it's a dirt version. Leavenworth has an asphalt version. And pump tracks is just what it means. It's everything that's on bicycles or roller skates or skateboards or the newer kind of can't think of the word for it. Equipment that the kids are riding around on. And what you can see, it's a, it uses the hillsides and so on to maintain pumping to get up to the top and then cruising as you get around to the side. The same thing is shown in Lake Shalane on the right. And of course, this is a paved version of what that example is. And these are very popular. Even more, it's more so than skate parks because they're more flexible and involve a greater variety of users. The same thing with courts and fields. And the top left is a sport court. So rather than having a basketball court by itself, which may not be used as, as frequently or having a tennis court, which is a large requirement is to combine these in what we will call sport courts, which can be basketball, pickleball, or in some cases even full tennis. And the top right is the same thing. You can actually get more users or more activities in a smaller amount of space and a smaller investment. And the bottom are versions of rectangular fields. So the concept is rather than having dedicated baseball fields, which you can only be used for baseball and only in the season, and the same for soccer, to lay them out in such a way that they're multipurpose and can be used on a more continuous basis throughout the year. And in some cases can be justified to make those turf rather than just grass. This is the final project list we're working on right now to implement these. And I've grouped these particular projects into conservation, waterfront access, trails, plazas and viewpoints, new parks, parks to be infilled with new activities, parks to be infilled that are county-owned, and then school improvements. There are two columns to the right. One is the total development cost. We're all parties to do, implement the projects that we're proposing within your plan. And the far right column is represents what we think you should fund. So if you look in the red box, as I put down there, the total improvements we're projecting is $100 million over 20 years. Your share would be 51 million of that or about 51%. Now, but one thing I should have pointed out with pros plans is they're holistic. They're looking at parks and recreation and trail needs throughout your city and UGA that needs to be done by everybody. And then your plan identifies who does what and what your piece is. Rather than trying to say this is your piece and then we have kind of incomplete puzzles. So this is a holistic full puzzle approach. Then the question is, how do you finance this? And what we're looking at financing, we're not just looking up on the top left of this chart. At capital improvements, we want to know what it's going to cost to administer. What the recreation program cost would be with the planning and project management cost would be, what maintenance would be? What repair and replacement of facilities are going to be worn out over the next 20 years? And then what we call the PLOS proposal level of service, which is new land and facility additions. If you look under alternative one, two, and three highlighted there is your $51 million objective over 20 years. And what's identified in those costs above that highlighted bar is what you will spend if you continue the trends you've had in your 2019 budget, allowing for about a two and a half percent inflationary growth over that 20-year period. So the 51 million is new facilities, but you're going to be short 118 million if we just look at that method of financing. Now, we're looking at proposed revenues. We're looking at general funds, paths and trails tax, real estate excise tax, park impact fees, and then grants. The one thing about your general fund tax is it can only grow 1% per year. So you see, you're looking at a $40 million across all three of those alternatives with kind of a limit on what you can expect to generate on general funds and what you can expect to realize from, for parks and recreation. But if the other sources you use, as we proposed here, you'll generate about 61 million. Or now we're short about 57 million of that total that we were looking at above. We have three options then that mix and match between those three alternatives. One is to increase your recreation cost recovery. And you can see in kind of the rose-tinted bars, alternative one says we'll propose to recover 25% of that cost. Alternative two says 50%, alternative three says 75%. The second is your growth impact fee and how much of the real cost you should expect to recover when you charge such a fee. Now, what we calculated is that you've invested about $2,373 per person right now, based on your current level of service or about $5,700 per an average single-family house. So under alternative one, you would, you would charge 25% of that. Alternative two, 50%, alternative three, 75%. The third option would be real estate excise tax, which you currently collect an option one and an option two. And the question would be, how much of that REIT do you allocate for parks and recreation versus other facility needs like police and fire and so on? So on alternative one, we would allocate 50%, alternative two, 55%, alternative three, 60%. Now, that still leaves us a shortfall. We've not met our total requirement above of 118 million. So the last option would be to look at a property tax levy. Now, we say it property tax levy rather than a GO bond. Because a GO bond can only be used for capital improvements, for construction. But a property tax levy can be used for anything, maintenance, programming, and construction. And a bond requires 60% approval of a 40% turnout. But a property tax levy, which can be sunset for the same period of time as a bond, like 20 years. Basically, what you're doing is resetting the base rate that you're charging on your property tax, but you're devoting the reset additional amount to parks and recreation. So if you did that approach and you did it for 20 years, then down on the very bottom highlighted in the box is what it would cost to make up the difference under each of those alternatives. So under alternative one, we had the least use of option one, two, and three. The average cost for $100,000 over a year would be $6.79. Or for an average home, about $19 per year. Under alternative three, if you used more of all those three options, then your cost for an average home, we've got $12. Those are very low amounts to generate what you need to generate to meet this requirement. And so we think it's more than feasible. Now, of course, how you mix and match, these would depend on city council's preferences. But I think the idea here is to show you that there are many ways it can, that you can combine some of these options and fully fund what we're proposing in this parks plan. So that's the end of the slideshow. Are there any questions?
Tom, I think we should see if the planning commissioners have any questions first and then I did notice an audience member had raised their hand. And so, planning commissioners, if you have any questions for, for Mr. Beckwith, please go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Beckworth, Mark Trenary here. I'm curious if you could go back over the number, how you got your 188 surveys? Was that mail? Was that stuff that came from the survey that was down at the waterfront park? How were those 188 people contacted?
We use the post offices, every door, direct mail. And what we do is you generate, we design a postcard and then the post, post office will actually print and to deliver that postcard to every address within your city limits. So that's what we did. We also posted it that this would be available on your website. And I think maybe some of those may even have been handed out at your parks.
And I would add that those mailers, Tom, I think they went out last year. We really, this project did not go as quickly as we had initially planned, I think, because of the pandemic and just the, the grant window that we're targeting. We have to have a plan adopted by this spring in order to apply in the next round of park grant programs through the Recreation Conservation Office. So if, if you don't remember seeing that, it would have been probably in, in the middle of 2020. Is that right, Tom?
Well, yes, that's right. Now, Marco, I'd add one other thing to it. We've done over 150 surveys in the projects we've done. And when we first started out, we did mail surveys, then we did phone surveys and we even did a phone and a mail back type approach. But we found that every door, direct mail gets, everybody has the opportunity to participate. We're not then trying to randomly select someone. But no survey is statistically representative of the population. They're all self-selected. Everybody decides whether they're going to participate regardless of what method you use to collect it. But we found this approach and the results of this approach are pretty accurate for referendum issues that come along later. So we think it's highly predictive of what would happen if you put something out on the ballot. And we're fairly confident that the results of it are supported that way.
Thanks, Tom. One more question from me, please. The 188 number seems really small to me. Out of the 14,000 folks we have in the city, is that a typical representative of the replies that you get on these type of things?
Well, remember, each one of those represents a household. So this was a survey asking a household to fill it out for the household versus a person. So you take the 188 and maybe multiply it by two and a half or three to come up with your population. But honestly, during COVID, we had trouble getting people to respond to surveys of every kind. And it was not that people were disinterested, but they were so bombarded with virtual methods of doing everything that there was a little bit of a burnout. And in this case, I think that the timing of this one, almost in the middle of the pandemic, may have been a part of the factor that.
Okay, thanks, Tom.
And Mark, to add to Tom's response, I mean, for turnout in Port Orchard, 150 responses is actually pretty good. I would say it's above average compared to some of the other processes we've had. The Community Event Center, I think, had closer to 500. That's probably our best ever turnout. But remember, that was also the library, which has a much wider service area. And so they were getting responses from Manchester and other people in the south end of the county that use the library. And so that's why those numbers were significantly higher. So this is pretty, a pretty decent response relative to what we've historically seen with other projects.
Okay, thanks, Nick. I appreciate it.
Did any other planning commissioners have a question before I unmute one of the participants?
No.
All right, I see Wayne and Kelly have their hand up. I'm going to allow you to talk. If anybody else would like to talk, please raise your hand using the raise hand button at the bottom of the Zoom window and I can unmute you. So Wayne and Kelly, are you there?
I think so. Can you hear us?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. It works. Thank you, folks. My name is Wayne Wright. I live at 4,800 Castleton Road Southwest in Port Orchard in McCormick Woods. I'm glad that this graphic is up because it's, it's germane to my question. Tom did a good job. I appreciate it as a consultant myself. I know how much work it is to do this. But my question gets down to kind of the HOA stuff. You mentioned quite accurately that the HOA trails and the parks that we have here are publicly, or not public. They are privately funded and maintained. Yet this analysis shows a connection from the city right to all of the nice private parks and open spaces that we have here. Yet we spend a lot of money on our HOA to maintain those trails. Did you consider the cost-sharing factor of connecting to our private trails and systems with this thing and your cost analysis? Because you're going to have an issue with all of the McCormick Woods people with this connection because we're having troubles now with public people coming in and using our facilities without paying for it.
I think that only HOA, I guess, trail we connected to is your main trail through McCormick Woods, which we understood was publicly accessible. Is that right?
I'm not sure of that, but we know we're seeing lots of people parking along our roads and accessing all of our trails like crazy now. And this is just going to promote it. So I'm just telling the planning commission and the city council that you're going to have a conflict if you don't work this out with us because we're spending a lot of money in maintenance of our open spaces. And this is not what is intended by that expense.
I guess I'd like to speak to that if I can, Tom. I think the city's intent here is really to make connections between McCormick Woods and the rest of the city. And that's as much about getting McCormick residents, giving them the ability to, to get into town on bike or on foot if they want to head over to the Sydney-Sedgwick area or, or into town in Tremont and get down to the waterfront. And I would add that with the completion of the other trail projects in the city, I think that you're going to see, I guess, a more equitable distribution of facilities so that people don't have to go to McCormick, which is one of the only areas where you can access these facilities currently. So I-
Nice try, Nick, but that doesn't fly. I did the permits on the original Bay Street Trail way back when, way back when. And riding your bike down Old Clifton and under the highway is not acceptable for us out here. It'll be more attractive to come here for a day trip than go back into town. So I think you need to reassess that on argument or you're going to be blasted by all of us that live out here. It's it's just not the way it works. It's not compatible.
Well, just, just to speak to the old Clifton pathway, that's already in the transportation plan as a grade-separated pathway. So it's not alongside the roadway. It's separated with a vegetative and buffer as well as at a different elevation from the roadway. And so that, that facility really is meant so that people can ride outside of the travel lanes. So we're really sinking the parks- So we're really sinking the park's plan up to the transportation plan as it's already written.
Well, we have also got three roundabouts coming out here. That's got to be accommodated with that whole plan that is shown here. So. There's a lot of going, there's a lot of intertwined going ons, and the whole package is going to have to be laid out for this community. Because we're growing leaps and bounds, as you know. And you're going to have another fifteen hundred homes out here in the next ten years, probably. So this is going to clash when it comes down to reality.
Thank you for your comment.
Are there any other questions? Then the one thing I should have pointed out when I did these costs. These include construction, design, engineering, permitting, taxes, and contingencies. So the hundred million total and the fifty-one million on your part covers everything, not just construction. And that was the idea, to make sure that if you fund these things, that you're paying for everything to put it in the ground, get it ready to operate. So if there are no other questions?
And, and Tom, real quick, I know in your financing plan, I don't remember a, a real thorough discussion of park impact fees. Did you want to touch on that briefly?
Sure. The question on park impact fees, first off, is determine what you've invested and how you've invested that. And that's where it came up, as you see down there under the person, two thousand three hundred seventy-three dollars. That's what we value your city asset as. Per person right now, based on your existing level of service. Now, impact fees are meant to cover the impact of new growth, not of existing conditions. So you have to increase capacity with whatever you invested in. So if you're building a new park, that increases capacity, and you can use impact fees for that purpose. If you take an existing athletic field and convert it to turf and light it, you've increased the capacity if it were just dirt and not lit. And you can use it for that. But it can only be used to increase that capacity. Now, one of the issues, if you charge an impact fee, is the percent that you charge. So under alternative one, we said you would charge twenty-five percent of that value investment under new facilities. Well, the other seventy-five percent you're on the hook for is the city. So when you charge that developer, and he pays that impact fee, the residents of that developer, development. Fully expect whatever that impact fee was charged for will result in a new park that serves their needs. And if you don't, as a city, match whatever you decided to charge a developer, then you're on the hook for it. And you can have significant issues if you don't complete it. Example was a, a project in Bothell. And the developer paid the fee, and the city was on the hook for the remainder, I think it was about sixty percent. The park never materialized, and so the developer sued to get his impact fee back. And of course, the developer was happy because he got the fee, but the neighborhood residents were upset because they didn't get a park, whether it was paid with impact fees. Or matching impact fee and city funds. So behooves you to consider that as you try to determine what percent of that you expect to be a fair amount. Now, those impact fees have been charged historically on residential development. But any new development in a city also brings in customers and employees and even tourists. And so some cities have tried to evaluate whether they can collect a fee on commercial development. And in most cases, the measurement there is not persons, it's square footage. Or it's an attempt to try to evaluate when an employee, customer, tourist uses of an existing park. That works very well in a community like Toquilla, where there's a huge volume of customers and, and employees that come into the city that don't live there. But in cities where you have a more balanced, less industrial base, it can get kind of dicey trying to come up with a formula that you can. That's equitable and that you can defend in court. So after we looked over some of your options, we decided the safest and the, and the best. Justifiable approach would be to use just the residential impact fee in your community for now. But I think your question to council is, what percent of that do you want to charge, and what percent then are you expecting to pay the balance with other city funds? Nick, was that what you wanted to hear?
I think that's good. Thank you.
Mark.
Tom, one more thing. I noticed on your plan, you have the on-road pathway heading west out of town. What is the projected stopping point for that pathway heading west out of Port Orchard? Along one sixty-six?
That would, that's where Bay Street intersects underneath the bridge there. And we find that there's enough capacity close to that point. You can see kind of the nub there that sticks out into the bay. To have a waterfront access point. Now, all of those are tied into a water trail plan that's also in the pros plan, and it, it. Covers the bay and extends into the Cascade Marine Trail. And you have a lot of significant sites that can provide local short paddles and long-term day paddles, if you want.
All right, thank you, Tom.
Joe.
Hi, Tom. I just wanted to say thanks to you and thanks to the planning team at the City of Port Orchard for the hard work you've put into this. I know that COVID nineteen arose after you started your process. I know there's been a lot of work in the background and the details with the team in Port Orchard, so I just wanted to say thanks to everybody who's involved. A lot of detail here and a lot of information. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Tom. If you want to stop sharing your screen, and then Annette, you can move us on to the next item.
All right, thank you, people.
Thank you.
And I'm going to leave now then, Nick, unless you've got something else for me.
Uh, no, that's good. Thank you.
All right, thank you, people.
Thanks, Tom.
So next up is the presentation draft McCormick Village SubArea Plan.
All right, so this is a, a brief presentation, kind of bringing everyone up to speed. On where we are at in the planning process. The McCormick Village SubArea Plan is a city-initiated plan. We don't have a consultant on board for this one, and we are working with the. The landowner McCormick Communities to help put this together. They've done some work on. Putting together graphics and, and other pieces of this, and so it really has been a partnership with McCormick Communities. Again, for, I know we had a, a quite a few members of the public in the audience. I'm Nick Bond. I'm the Community Development Director. For the city and my staff here today. Carrie Salie, Josie Radamacher, and Jim Fisk are all in attendance. They've all contributed to this planning document. See here, I'm going to, I'm going to make this a full screen real quick. All right, so just to refresh everybody's memory, the area that we are talking about in this plan is outlined on the map in red. It does not include McCormick Woods or the development at Channing Circle or McCormick Meadows. These are all areas that are either publicly owned, owned by the Christ the Rock Church or owned by the city. The red area, you'll notice there's a purple area on the inside and then the red area on the outside. The red area is really being looked at because under the Puget Sound Regional Council's Vision twenty fifty. Which is our regional growth strategy, as well as the countywide planning policies adopted by KRCC. The city is required to plan for centers, and this is a identified center in our comprehensive plan. The, the, the center's criteria that are created by PSRC include certain thresholds for population and employment. To make sure that when you're planning a center, it has a balance of people and jobs in a, an area of a certain size. Really, the purpose for drawing the line the way that we have is because, number one, there's, when the future school site develops, we expect that there will be significant employment. On that piece of property. We also have to meet a certain level of activity within the center boundary. And so most of the things outside of the purple area are already entitled. You have a subdivision approval from Kitsap County for McCormick West, and you have a subdivision approval from the city. For the areas of McCormick North, which are, are currently known as McCormick Village, going up Campus Parkway and along Figley Road. You can see the houses that TriPoint is currently constructing. I think they've got about twelve houses under construction at this time. So the planning area is really defined as this red boundary, but the, the purple area. And specifically, the purple area on the north side of Old Clifton is mostly what we are focused on in turn, in terms of developing concept plans. And really trying to create regulations that will allow a compact, you know, innovative neighborhood core. That will serve all of the residents of McCormick Woods, McCormick North, McCormick Meadows, and, and. The future McCormick West, which is under construction today. So a little background, the, the neighborhood village concept, this has been in Kitsap County's plans for at least twenty years. I think it goes back as far as the late nineties, and it may have even been, been something discussed in the original master plan from McCormick Woods. When it was in the county. We identified the area in, are we, I'm sorry, we annexed the area around two thousand and ten. And then in our two thousand and sixteen comprehensive plan, we identified the McCormick Village Center as a designated center. Where we want to have jobs and, and housing and activity to create a neighborhood core. The, the city started the subarea planning process earlier this year. We had met with the developer. They came to us with some concept plans, and we realized that, you know, they were, they were willing to do something innovative that would, I think, be a, a long-term advantage. To the city to have a, a very pedestrian-oriented commercial area that, that's going to be. You know, well landscaped, well manicured, and provide places for people to meet and gather. And so after we saw what they were trying to do, we looked at, at our regulations and our plans, and we said, well, let's put together a, a subarea plan. That really sort of facilitates this and make sure that it meets the community, the community's objectives. So we did some public outreach. We did a, a survey back this past spring. We had a, a pretty good response, I think. Carrie, you'd have to correct me. I think we had about seventy-five responses and maybe more after, after the initial count came in. The developer also had some private meetings with the HOA. I think about fifty people attended a presentation with Eric Campbell. And Greg Crabby. We gave a similar presentation then to the Planning Commission in, in June. And then we spent the summer working on this document and just released the draft plan in the Planning Commission packet. And are here tonight making this presentation. So the public outreach I mentioned, we, we did a survey and. Generally speaking, the responses, we had very strong support, one way or another, for particular issues. And then on a few areas, we had sort of mixed results. So I think there was broad consensus on the need for conservation of trees and wildlife. And natural habitat protection. There was strong consensus concerning the need for additional schools in the west side of Port Orchard. And there was strong concern for traffic, parking availability, and access to public transit. Where things became more mixed was when we were talking about housing types, housing affordability. And then whether or not additional entrances were needed for McCormick Village Park. There was a majority support for that, but it was, several people really didn't have a strong opinion one way or another. The other thing was that, and I think this has to do with that five-minute walk shed. But only a small majority of people said they, they would likely walk to a business district if it was created versus wanting to drive to it. And so it, it stands to reason that people that are further south or east or in, you know, north in McCormick Meadows. If, if it becomes too far, they're probably going to drive to a business rather than walking to it. So the, from the survey questions that we asked and the, the responses that we received. We wrote, I think it's seventeen overarching plan goals, and they're, they're listed here on the, the slides. It's really providing opportunities to shop, dine, meet, and gather. You know, we're talking about twenty thousand square feet of commercial space, mostly restaurants, retail, a coffee shop. Possibly a, a small grocery store. And there was a strong desire to have connectivity to the surrounding area for pedestrians, bicycles. As well as ensuring that there's adequate capacity for, for cars. Kitsap Transit even commented, they, they did request that we ensure that there are pads for future transit service that are provided in the neighborhood. If it's going to be an area that people can walk to and gather, they want to make sure that they could eventually bring bus service to the area. There was a strong preference for green building techniques. Providing outdoor plazas, gathering spaces, opportunities, opportunities for outdoor dining. Again, making things pedestrian-oriented, benches, lighting, street trees, sidewalks, protecting streams and wetland buffers. Preserving existing trees where possible and making sure that there's plenty of tree canopy in the future, providing pocket parks. And really, one of the questions we asked about was, you know, should the commercial area actually be right next to the park entrance? So that the park is sort of an anchor for the commercial area, and the commercial area is an anchor for, for park users. And that would potentially allow somebody with kids to come and get, you know, go to the park, walk across the street, get ice cream. Something along those lines, and there was a strong response in favor of that. There's also a concern about making sure that Old Clifton Road is improved as a multimodal corridor. That kind of ties the ridge, McCormick Woods, McCormick Meadows, and McCormick West together so that you can walk between those areas. Making sure that there's adequate parking to serve the commercial corridor, and then partnering with South Kitsap School District to make, to develop the. The school loan site at Figley and Old Clifton Road. The next series of slides mostly show photos that McCormick Community has actually presented at their meeting to the HOA. And the, the Planning Commission in June. A central concept, the photo over here on the right is a Wunorf Street, and that is a feature that is proposed in the commercial corridor. Other, the commercial core of the neighborhood. There are several examples of different housing types, all very pedestrian-oriented with sidewalks and. Nice shop fronts and outdoor kind of open-air gathering spaces. Again, this is a, another shot of that, that Wunorf Street that was developed on the east side of Seattle. Stormwater amenities that are integrated into the landscape, low-impact development-type techniques. And so, again, back to the map, I'm, I'm going to focus in on the area north of Old Clifton. The plan really is all about providing for this area north of Old Clifton and south of, of Road A, which is Yarrow. Yarrow Road Southwest, I believe, is what is, it is officially named now. So the commercial village is located on the east side of the site, just off the new roundabout. There is. Surface parking proposed. There's also parking proposed along the street. It's a diagonal angle in parking at the end, the wet, the new west entrance to the park. I should mention the west entrance to the park also. This, this graphic is straight out of our two thousand and ten McCormick Village Park Master Plan. It called for a public restroom, a small playground, an amphitheater, and then tying into those existing trails. So that somebody who parks on Campus Parkway can, can walk over to the splash pad or the existing playground structures of the, the off-leash dog park. The, the configuration has actually changed slightly. I threw this slide in there just so the public would know that the orientation of the parking has changed. So that it is, is on the corner of Yarrow and Campus Parkway rather than along Yarrow. So we'll have a color rendering that, that reflects this slightly tweaked layout. I mentioned the Wunorf Street already. This, this example is from Kirkland, and so it's, it's really a shared street. Where pedestrians and cars can all interact because the speed limit is very low. I think it's ten miles an hour. Or, or even five miles an hour through, through the one-way Wunorf Street. And because it's at grade with the sidewalk, it's something that can be closed off for events. If you want to have a, a Saturday farmer's market or some other type of event. You can do those sorts of things, or you could tie those together with the facilities that are being constructed at the west entrance to McCormick Village Park. And really, in terms of regulations, we're not changing a whole lot. The, the before zoning map is on the left, and the, you can see the big change here is that the mixed-use area. Is being shrunk slightly and follows sort of the concept plan that McCormick Communities has put together. Also, there's Stormwater Pond that was constructed for the roundabout is being shown as a, a. Infrastructure-type property. Other than that, the zoning is remaining R three. and parks and recreation for the park and then civic and institutional for the school and the church. The other change that is needed to implement the subarea plan has to do with creating an overlay district for this northern area of McCormick Village. Currently, we allow detached homes, backyard cottages, duplexes, attached homes, townhomes, live work apartments, single story shop front and mixed use shop front buildings. And that's either in the R three or the commercial type buildings are in the the CMEU zone, which was the red, the red hash on the previous page. The the developer has proposed two new sort of innovative housing types, and so we are looking to create standards that allow those specifically. Paseo Homes and Four Court Apartments are the two building types, and I'll I'll show you what those look like here momentarily. We're making minor revisions to building setbacks and given that this area is not adjacent to existing homes, you know, that's something that buyers will be aware of when they're moving into the neighborhood. All we're proposing that all structures have a porch, a stoop and awning. And that one, one of those elements is required for residential buildings. And then we're providing for on and off street parking standards. And the idea with this area is that the on-street parking is really shared parking within the neighborhood. And so if you have things going on in the commercial areas during the day, there's overflow parking where you can park more into the residential areas and at night, when things are quieter and people are home for the evening, those residents are then able to park on the street. So we're we're really looking at balancing the parking through sort of a shared arrangement in the public streets. The Four Court Apartment, this is the concept for that building. I know they've talked about doing this two different ways. One way would be three units per floor on a two-story building with garages off of an alley and apartments above the alley for for two units over the alley. They've also talked about doing vertically separated units where each unit has a second, a first and second floor and they're just separated by common walls. So we're looking at standards that would allow this building type, which doesn't fit squarely within the apartment category, but generally is similar to an apartment in its intensity and use. Paseo Homes are the other housing type. I wish I had a little bit better graphic right now, but this is all I I could come up with. Essentially, Paseo Homes are a small cluster of homes, maybe six or eight units tops with they all share kind of a common green open space and that open space fronts on a primary street. And in in this case, all of the units would have garages off of a an alley and might have carriage houses above the garage structures. So that's the other housing type that we're creating an overlay district to to explicitly allow. And that concludes my presentation. Carrie or Jim or Josie, is there anything I missed before I open it up for questions? No, right. Planning Commissioners, any any questions at this time?
I don't have any.
All right, I see Mr. Wayne and Kelly Wright have raised their hand and so I'm going to unmute you again so that you can ask a question. You should be unmuted.
Thank you. Wayne Wright again, forty-eight hundred Castleland Road Southwest, Port Orchard, Washington, in McCormick Woods. I think we may have a couple of questions because my bride Kelly is right next to me. My first question, though, it comes with your proposed changes to Paseo Homes and the Four Court Homes. With that change, is that change also included in your calculations for traffic load? Because we we're seeing a massive traffic influx out here. And just more units in this overlay, is it going to comp- comp- pre-compound the issues we're having with traffic now? Has it been included? That's my first question.
Yeah, so we have assumptions for development baked into our transportation model. And so the city in our in our transportation plan, we assumed a certain level of development for McCormick that's based on the existing entitlements as well as the Development Agreement for Transportation that originated with Kitsap County and then has recently been amended by the city. And so you, I think you mentioned earlier, you were aware of the three roundabouts in the old, the old Clifton Corridor. Those are really meant to prevent delays through the old Clifton Corridor. We also, if you're not aware, there's another subdivision called Sinclair Ridge, which is in Bremerton, and it's actually at the end of Campus Parkway. And when Bremerton permitted that about three, two or three years ago, they agreed to make improvements to the interchange at Tremont and Highway sixteen to to make turning movements better for people getting on and off of Highway sixteen and coming out Old Clifton Road. They're also participating in the funding of the Campus Parkway improvement as well as paying a general impact fee to the city. Other traffic issues in the city, obviously, we're well aware of issues and I think probably the most frequent complaints that we hear are the Sedgwick Corridor near the lows and the Bethel Corridor. And both of those projects are funded from our Traffic Impact Fee Program. And so all the homes in both the McCormick Development as well as other development in the city is paying into those improvements. I'm happy to report that the the budget for twenty twenty-two does include the first design work on the Bethel Corridor. We're actually hiring a transportation engineer to design those improvements. Likewise, we are hiring next year a transportation engineer to start designing the Old Clifton multimodal improvements, which includes that grade separated pathway, which will at least tie all of the roundabouts together so that residents of McCormick who want to walk to the park or walk to this commercial area will have the ability to do so. The Sedgwick and Sidney corridors, I know there's a lot of traffic in that general area. Kitsap Transit is planning a massive park and ride facility on a piece of property that they're purchasing just north of Albertson's and they are, we are looking at the mitigation requirements associated with that with that project and also the the improvements that are required by some of the other development happening on that Sydney Avenue Corridor right now.
Okay, great. A lot of information. So we took some notes as fast as we could. Second question that I have before I turn it over to my bride. I see that you reduced the commercial area in your zoning situation. One of the very appealing things that Eric presented to us back in was May, I guess, April or May, was the the fact that we might have some some commercial properties coming in, some restaurants, some of those amenities that we direly, we really would like to see them come out here, coffee shops, whatever. And you've reduced that with your zoning map that I saw by about a half. What was the reasoning for reducing the that mixed use commercial zone? Keep going back, the pink. That that, yeah, that one. Why why that reduction?
Sorry, I I accidentally muted myself. So I mentioned the the blue area, this little finger that sticks out here is actually a stormwater pond associated with the the roundabout and the the Campus Parkway improvements. So that's part of the reduction there. I think that when the original line was drawn, it was just drawn to match the old parcel lines before a boundary line adjustment was performed. And so it no longer matched the the parcel lines as they existed. So obviously, everything south of Yarrow, that was sort of the cutoff on the north side of the the zoning map and I'll I'll go to the concept plan here. So so nothing north, some of the some of the property north of Yarrow was actually commercial mixed use, but that's because Yarrow had not been designed at the time we created our zoning map. I think when you get down here, if you actually look at the topography at the roundabout, first of all, first of all, you can't have driveways off of the roundabout. They have to be set back a certain proximity from the intersection. But that's about a thirty-foot embankment right there at that corner. And so I think just looking at the topography and the amount of grading and tree removal and other considerations that would be required, it didn't make sense to try to to flatten that to make it suitable for commercial use. So that's intended to preserve some of those existing trees and sort of tuck some of these more compact two-story apartment units in more into the woods, I think, than than to clear it for commercial use.
Okay, so and I think Eric and Greg are well aware that McCormick Woods currently has been approved by Port Orchard Municipal Code for golf course, golf cart access and driving around the community. And I can tell you that the support from McCormick Village is really strong if people can take their carts over. I'm giggling, but it's take your cars over and go get a cup of coffee. So as you're looking at your multimodal transport and some of those options, that really needs to be considered as part of it because it is a strong factor that we can actually, I don't know, on a golf cart, we probably never will, but people want to be able to drive their golf carts over to the park into that commercial village.
Yes, we've we've actually discussed that with Eric and Greg and proposed that maybe there be some sort of golf cart parking in the vicinity of the roundabout so that you can get out and walk the three hundred feet to the commercial area. So I know the police chief would be totally opposed to anybody taking their golf cart onto Old Clifton because of speed limits and safety, but I think we could probably get people close. And I do believe that the intent is to expand the golf cart zone to include McCormick West.
All right. Second point, and I can't speak strongly enough about this, having moved here in eighty-five with the last brand new schools were built in eighty-five. We cannot put this many students into this area without more schools. We just can't do it. Our high school cannot handle more students. You've got the land. We've got to do something. Please, you've got to get kids a place to go to school because this is this is not going to work. We won't get anybody by those homes if we don't have a school out here. I can't say it strongly enough.
Thank you for the comment. And I think that I I can safely speak for most of the city council when I say that there there is no shortage of support for school expansion from the city. I think that you know, it's it's been so close on so many different votes. And you know, maybe with the population increases of the last two years, we actually have enough voters to get a bond across the finish line. Unfortunately, this the city's responsibility for providing schools is we we do partner with the district on the School Impact Fee Program. So the schools are collecting money to pay for building those schools, but they have to get the match from local residents through a bond measure in order to actually complete the construction because you can't ask development to pay a hundred percent of the school cost when there's already existing deficiencies. So I, you know, I think we're going to continue to see bond measures come forward. I I think I've heard rumblings that that the school district is going to start talking about this again in the near future. But yeah, I I completely agree with you and we will, we will support it as much as we can in our goals and policies in the plan. But at the end of the day, the city, the city does not run the school district.
Yeah, we really appreciate that, Nick, greatly. But maybe this is for Eric and even Greg. You know, when we bought our home here in Eldon Trails, we didn't get a little flyer or the importance notice of, hey, you bought a new house and the great community is growing. Please, please, please support the schools. It'd be so nice if if the developer and the home builders put something together that when you buy a house in all this new development, that you remind them that we need to support our community schools. That's something you guys can do and it wouldn't be hard to do and every real estate agent could have it. So when you get your house, you get your HOA stuff, you get a little flyers, please support schools. Whether they do or not, you're not, you're not telling them to do something. You're saying, hey, look, think about it. It's important for our community. And as planners, everybody on the that's on the Planning Commission and you planners, yeah, I know you guys can't do anything about it, but you got to do something more than we have been doing because it's not been working for so many years. So we got to get more clever. Got to get clever. Okay, I'm out. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have one more participant who's raised their hand. So there is a Carrie or Kari in the audience. I'm going to unmute you.
Yeah, hi. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I am curious about all along Old Clifton, if there is going to be a tree border. It almost looks like all the homes are just right up against the road. I can't tell from the the way it's lined in there. And then also I men- also mentioned were bike paths. I'm kind of curious where bike paths would be in this new new area.
Yeah, I'm I'm happy to talk about that. So first of all, there is an intent to preserve the existing trees along Old Clifton to the extent that there's a, I think there's about forty to sixty feet of of buffer along the road there. And then as part of the new development, even those areas that are cleared, we're establishing a tree canopy requirement to ensure that new trees are being planted so that they will grow up and provide that canopy and sort of supplement the trees that are being retained. In terms of the pedestrian path, the 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 plan right now is we're hiring an engineer to design the corridor. And so everything to the east of the Campus Parkway Roundabout, all the way to Anderson Hill, we're planning a grade separated pedestrian pathway. I know that the road is very narrow along the park. And so there's one part where the pathway is going to be tied up against the road with probably a Jersey barrier. And we actually, I believe, we're going to have to cantilever that road or I'm sorry, the pathway over the the side slope. So you'll be right up against the the trees there on the side of the the road for about a hundred feet. But the rest of it should be opened up and have good separation from the roadway. And I think we're talking about a ten or a twelve foot pathway. Once you get, coming from McCormick Woods, once you get to Campus Parkway, it is our intent to route sort of the beginner and intermediate cyclists and path users up through McCormick North, either using Yarrow to get over to the school rather than going along Old Clifton. Old Clifton does, we do identify shoulder improvements on Old Clifton so that more advanced cyclists who want to kind of navigate what, it's kind of a little canyon right now. There's, there's pretty good slopes on both sides of the road. And it's it's not a place where beginners probably feel comfortable riding. And so that corridor would just have improved shoulders for the more advanced cyclists, but the pedestrians would be routed up through the neighborhood. There is also a roundabout planned at at Fagley Road at some point in the future, but the the need for that from a a traffic delay standpoint, we think that's still a long ways out. So it it probably won't happen until we get a school project on the the site to the northwest of that intersection.
Okay, thank you very much. And the last question I had was, is there going to be a roundabout on the exit from Highway sixteen on Old Clifton? It's really hard to make a left-hand turn to go towards McCormick Woods once we exit the freeway.
There's not going to be a left turn lane, but they're, they are adding a drop lane. And the tip that not everybody always thinks of, but if you make a right onto Tremont, you can go to the first roundabout and make a U-turn in that roundabout and head west and not sit there waiting for fifteen minutes. And so the the idea is that you actually use the roundabout to make the left turn. And so you go east for two hundred feet and and make a two hundred and seventy degree or three hundred and sixty degree turn and and then come back the other way.
Yeah, I mean, that that's kind of a not the best of alternatives. I've done that many times because I I it's not safe to take a left there many times because you have two two lanes coming at you. But so I was just curious if there was going to be any improvements on that.
Yeah, I well, and ultimately, the the actual interchange is not in the city limits. It's in the county. Tremont is in the city and it it's a Wash Dot intersection. When they designed it, they did not leave a whole lot of room to make those sorts of improvements. And so we've looked at it sort of cursor, you know, taken a cursory look at the the intersection. There's no real good solution to that without, you know, changing the overpass. And I know that 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 particular overpass, when they, when they built the road, that was a pretty wet area and it's not the easiest conditions for 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 building. So I, you know, I I wish I had a better answer on on that particular area, but that's ultimately a state, state and a county facility.
All right. Okay, thank you very much.
We have one more person who's raised their hand. I think actually two more people. I've got Courtney Brooks. I'm going to unmute you.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can.
Great. I don't know if this is part of the planned area or if this is out of the range, but Fagley Road, if you look at Google Maps, sometimes it directs you down Fagley Road. And when you end up in that gorse area, it's it's pretty impossible to take a left and almost impossible to take a right. It's really a bad area. Are there any planned improvements to that intersection of Fagley Road with? I guess it's Highway sixteen at that point.
There are not. We we fielded a few polls over the years and ultimately that that road is in the unincorporated county. And so it's not part of our city transportation plan because it's it's neither in the city nor in our urban growth area. But concerning that road, we've we've directed people to the county Transportation Department and to the County Commissioner's Office because it's something that we hear frequently.
Okay, thank you.
So we also have now Mitch. I'm going to unmute you. You should be good to talk.
Hi, so it's actually not Mitch. It's my husband's computer, he's sitting here, but my name is Tiffany Mitchell, I'm his wife. And we live in the Eldon Trails area. I just wanted to, because I felt like it didn't get talked about too much. Can you talk a little bit about the process for determining like areas of habitat conservation for both the aesthetic value as well as for, you know, species and and animals? I I guess I just want to hear a little bit more about that, how much is really being preserved and if that's going to be meaningful for habitat preservation, really?
Sure. Well, I I think the place to start with that question is that all of this proposed development is within the city of Port Orchard. And so under the Growth Management Act, urban areas are are meant for development and rural areas are really meant for very low density development and conservation. With that said, within urban areas, we have an obligation under, under the GMA to protect critical areas. And so there, there are critical areas delineated throughout McCormick West. There's a creek running north, kind of along the the backside of the McCormick North Development. All of that has been protected with buffers that were in place at the time the development was approved. And so those, those natural areas are being preserved. We unfortunately, the the core area, we're preserving trees where we can, but as this is kind of the village core, it's, it's really hard to preserve forested conditions other than in in sort of pockets and and buffers along the roadway. But the approach that we are taking and, you know, I I don't know if you were here during the last windstorms when the the power went out on Old Clifton Road because the trees blew down over the the power lines there. But a lot of times when you, when you take a standing forest and you start removing pieces of it, the trees become much more susceptible to blow down. And so it's, it's sort of preferable from a loss prevention standpoint to actually make sure that you're planting, you're sort of restoring the forest as you develop so that those trees grow up in in the wind conditions that they're going to sort of face, you know, for the foreseeable future. So we're really, we're really taking a two-pronged approach. We're trying to preserve trees where we can in areas where they're not going to present a risk to you know, life and property. And we are also ensuring that we achieve like a thirty percent tree canopy type standard. I I don't know if it's thirty percent or twenty-five, but there's going to be a percentage that's required and we're going to have landscape plans that really aim to provide that canopy within a certain period of time. And so that's, that's how we're handling the the tree aspect of things. In terms of wildlife, it's, it really comes down to those wildlife corridors that we have on on Anderson Creek and in the wetlands and other buffers that are are being protected. Those are sort of the natural areas in the wildlife corridors that are are being preserved. And I don't know, did that answer your question?
It did, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
It looks like everybody, there's a few hands up, but they've already spoken. So I think planning commissioners, any final thoughts on the the subarea plan? I think our, our goal at this point is to bring this forward for a hearing at your November meeting. And so we will be posting this plan. I'm waiting for the updated graphic from the Greg and Eric. And we will be I'm going to, sorry, I'm going to mute our the citizens who chimed in there, they were I think giving us some background noise. Anyway, we're, we're getting ready to put the final plan on the website so that there's time for the public to comment on it. Jim is putting the finishing touches on the overlay district to really facilitate what was shown here in the concept plan. And and we've got a we are aiming to have all of this ready for the planning commission in about two and a half weeks. Greg or Eric, did you have anything you wanted to, to to mention or discuss on this?
No, thank you to Nick and Jim and Carrie and Josie, you guys all did excellent work. And we'll have those graphics up and we'll even show him in even more commercial area than this one concept plan that we're looking at right now. So I think the good news, more tree preservation, a little bit more commercial area and really should make for a great pedestrian community going forward. So thank you.
All right, Annette, do you want to announce the next item on our agenda?
I, yes. First, I want to thank everybody that spoke during this presentation and the one prior. It's really nice to get the public's feedback on on plans that are moving forward. And just to, you know, so we as a planning commission too, and the planning department can really hear what you guys are asking for and wanting. So thank you for coming and speaking and even just listening. So in saying that, I want to, we'll move on to now business item C. It's discussion for the flood damage prevention code.
My hope here is that Carrie is going to unmute herself and speak to this.
I actually had asked you, Nick, if you could speak to this because it's hurting, it's still hurting me to talk.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
I am parched, but I will do my best here.
I'm sorry.
So the flood prevention ordinance that is before you, we have in our code, chapter twenty point one seven zero. And this chapter applies to development that is either in a mapped FEMA floodplain or has the potential to to cause flooding, for for lack of a better word. Our code currently requires that if you build in these areas, which is fairly infrequent in Port Orchard, mainly it's coastal flooding issues that we have. There's very little development within mapped floodplains on streams because most of it is at the bottom of Blackjack Creek Ravine and nobody has a way to get down there to build anything. But if you were to build in these areas, you're required to ensure that your, your finished floor elevation is at a certain elevation above what what would be considered a flood risk. So in other parts of the country in the Midwest, on some of the bigger rivers, you'll see houses built on stilts and that's because of of flooding hazards that exist. In Port Orchard, most often people would simply build upland of any flood area. Or if they chose to build in a floodplain, they're certainly going to make sure that their ground floor is is high and dry so that even if water comes up around their house, they don't, they don't suffer a a loss from flooding. So the the code that we have in place was last updated about five years ago and every five or so years, we get a call from the Department of Ecology, they the the staff person at Ecology is David Radabaugh, who runs this program. And they will typically offer us technical assistance. They will point us in the direction of new FEMA maps that have sort of revised where flood risk areas exist. And they they help us prepare an update to our code. This year is no different. We are proposing to adopt the newest FEMA flood maps. I think they're now, those maps are now a few years old, but but we have not yet adopted those. The other thing that we are doing that we haven't done before is and I I believe we've done this and Carrie, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have been looking at sea level rise in our downtown and the the risk of coastal flooding that is worsened by sea level rise. And so for the first time, we are looking at maps that actually factor in sea level rise in downtown. So there's, there's a few pockets of downtown where the existing ground is dry most of the time, but you all know, every couple of years, we get a king tide with some rain and wind. And suddenly you've got a foot of water downtown. In those areas, this, these new maps are going to require slightly higher building finished floor elevations than what were previously allowed. The worst area is actually near the Kitsap Bank where we're looking at building our community event center. And so we are actually designing that building well above the the minimum FEMA area. We're actually factoring in, I think it's for for up to two feet of of sea level rise, which you know, the hundred-year projections for sea level rise give you a certain probability. Nobody knows for sure what's going to happen. But two feet seems to get us pretty far down the road before we're going to have water in that that type of event anywhere near the books in our our future library. So the ordinance before you, I mean, it really was put together with technical assistance from experts at the state. We are asked to adopt this and essentially it it requires the same thing that's always required, which is that you get a permit and provide a flood elevation certificate as part of your application to build. It's just that now we have a new map, which is slightly different than the old map and probably imposes a little bit more of a burden, but rightly so, because the models have been calibrated and we've we factored in the the actual risk, risk that exists in our community. So with that, this is really just to kind of introduce you to the the ordinance and I my expectation is that you'll take some time to read this and then when we have a hearing, you'll come back to me with some really good questions, but if if the first two items on the agenda didn't wear you out, you're welcome to to continue discussing this and ask me questions. And all my planning commissioners have turned off their cameras because I think, I think I've worn them out.
We're here. We're just listening.
All right. Well, did, did it, did anyone have a question about this item? Our intent is to schedule this for a hearing before the planning commission and Carrie, are we going to do this at the November meeting? I think we are, right?
That's not determined yet. You had me initially pull it off the schedule because we have so many other hearings right now.
Okay, we we are, we are determining when this will come forward, but it's possible this would come forward for a hearing in a little over two weeks. Actually, is it, it might actually be two weeks. Yeah, it's two weeks from tomorrow. So not seeing any questions, feel free to email Carrie or I if you do have questions between now and our next meeting. And will we, Carrie, is this on the website yet?
Um, it's going up to Wednesday.
Okay, that's when the public notice gets in, goes in the paper?
Yes.
All right.
Hey, Carrie, it's Stephanie. I found I was able to find that email that you sent regarding the laptops and Matt for IT. So I will just, I'll do like your email says, and I will just reach back to you to set up a a time to get in contact with him. His number wasn't in the email, but I can reach out to you separately for that.
Okay, that's fine, sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Annette, you're muted.
Thanks. The only question that I have about the tonight's agenda is it is missing the minutes. Is that is that going to go to next, the next meeting?
Yeah, we were just trying to get the few items that we had through tonight since it was a special meeting. And we weren't doing the general public comment that we usually do before and after as well. So we were just fitting these few items that we really had to keep on schedule. But we will, in two more weeks, we'll bring back the minutes.
Okay. So is there anything else for tonight?
Well, thank you all for being here and please, if you're, if you're going to be unavailable on the second, please let us know well in advance in case we have to to juggle things. Carrie, did you want to make any, any announcements tonight?
I just wanted to let everybody know that I will, I'm actually leaving the city of Port Orchard. My last day here will be November twelfth. And I have really, really enjoyed working with all of you and I'll be telling, you know, everyone else that when I see you in a couple of weeks. But I'm, I'm really going to be missing all of you very much. It's been, it's been a pleasure and a privilege to work with all of you. Thank you.
I'm sorry to see you leave, but congratulations on this next chapter.
Thank you.
Can you tell us, are you comfortable telling us where you're headed?
The Department of Commerce, Growth Management Services.
Oh, fantastic. Where we, we'd be able to work from home or will you be place-based?
From home. Occasional trips to Olympia and then to whatever communities they assign me to work with.
Nice, congratulations, but we're going to miss you.
Thank you so much. I'll miss you guys too.
We get you one more time, right?
Yes, one more time.
Congratulations.
Now you can't miss the next meeting because it's Carrie's last one.
Congratulations, Carrie, you're going to be super missed and you're so amazing. Thank you for your public service.
Thank you. I appreciate all this. Thank you.
You will be missed.
All right, thank you.
Nick, you're going to be in trouble.
Trouble, but Josie is here tonight and between Jim and Josie, they're gonna they're going to pitch in and hopefully we'll find another, another senior planner to come on board and and kind of take over things for Carrie.
Yeah, but you're not going to find another Carrie.
I will not find another Carrie.
All right, you guys, if there's something else, I'm gonna sign off and we'll see you in November.
All right.
Thanks, everybody.
Bye-bye.
Bye.